This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
Whether we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiorscitizen.com today.
See, we're short tonight because sickness is going around in schools. Alright, we call the meeting to order. For adopting the agenda, we're going to move B-10A from consent agenda to discussion action items into F-4. Having moved said item, this time I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. First by Galen, second by Tracy, all those in favor. That passes forward to zero. It's time for you to join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. This time I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. First by Galen, second by Jill, all those in favor. And that passes forward to zero. Moving on to item C, recognition classified employee of the month. Dr. Bulling.
Please, the board would like to share the October classified employee of the month. Ms. Cassie Shutey was presented this award this month. Cassie is the nurse at Cornerstone. She was nominated by Ms. Lani Hurt, our district nurse, who had this to say about Cassie. Cassie had a busy start to the school year that required lots of accommodations and collaboration with many staff members to ensure the health and wellness of high-risk students. She took all the responsibility with great attitude and continues to provide excellent care to the students of Cornerstone. We are very lucky to have her. Congratulations, Cassie Shutey.
Next up is the MSBA P Card rebate presentation. Dr. Bulling, or Dr. Tomlinson is going to do that this evening.
Well, we had invited Mike Parnell from MSBA to come and present this, but he was on his way to make it tonight, so I presented it in his stead. But we just wanted to let the school board know that we earned a rebate for MSBA's P Card program. This year, we made $5,153. Our total as a district is $30,800. He did make a few mentions in here, says this is the largest rebate the district's earned since beginning the program, and it was the ninth largest in the state of Missouri this year. So I think we're doing a good job fiscally with how we're spending our money and how we're trying to get as many perks and benefits. So for those who aren't aware, the P Card is, it's a credit, school credit card, but instead of getting like cash back or miles or those types of things, we actually get the cash that goes back to the school district. So it's actually done with the intention of, obviously, MSBA sponsors it. We try to get as many rewards out of it as we can, so we use it quite often. So pretty excited about that type of return. It's a nice return.
Yeah. Alright, next up is the MSBA delegate report. I don't even think our.
It was either one, huh?
Yeah. So I'll do it. Do the video.
Welcome to the October edition of the Missouri School Board's Association's Board Report. The start of the new school year has seen a large number of safety threats to schools. The threats have disrupted learning, distressed students, families, and teachers, and have ongoing costs. K-12 Safety and Center for Education Safety Director Bob Klossmeyer says that the increase in threats has emphasized the importance of having a solid emergency operations plan.
So what, the safety specialists, you know, they're busy with everyday activities, operation activities, and what they're finding is, they're realizing is that the emergency operation plan directly relates to the responses they need to take for these threats, the school threats and different activities. So what they're finding is by having, by not having an emergency operation place, plan in place, or not having an updated version, they're scrambling to get those completed. And an emergency operation plan is not something that can be done in a short amount of time. It takes time, it takes effort, and it takes a collaborative team to get this thing done.
On December 5th and 6th, MSBA Center for Education Safety Team is hosting a two-day safety summit titled "The Secret to Great Crisis Communications and Emergency Planning." The summit is designed for school leaders focused on crisis planning and will provide valuable insights, best practices, and practical strategies to effectively prepare for and navigate through crises in school settings. Engage with expert speakers and connect with peers to enhance your crisis management skills to keep staff and students safe.
We just started another school year, and already the nation's been rocked by more school violence. Here in Missouri and around the country, we're experiencing a significant increase of online threats of violence to our schools. Our kids, families, and educators need us to be at our very best on the worst of days. And the best response happens on a great crisis communication plan and when you're emergency prepared.
Bob Klossmeyer says that this summit is not just for safety personnel.
Well, there's a misconception out there that this is focused on just safety personnel. You know, your safety coordinators, your safety specialists, but it really isn't. I mean, it is for everybody from all levels, especially those administrators and those board members. Because, you know, when, when the event happens, when there's an emergency, an event happens, the media's gonna be involved. You're gonna have media coming from all over. They're coming out of the woodwork. And they're not going to the safety coordinators. They're going to the leadership. They're going to superintendents, to the administrators, they're going to the board. And they wanna know, what do you know about your emergency operation plan? What do you know about what happened?
Visit the MSBA website for information on registering for the safety summit and more information on the emergency operations planning tools and trainings available to your district. Filing for the next school board election is only a couple of months away. There are many things that districts can do between now and the start of filing to prepare. MSBA's Associate Executive Director of Leadership Development, Cameron Whitaker, says that this is a great time to start communicating with the community about the upcoming election process.
So candidate filing doesn't open until December. So you have technically two months to let your community know that you do have an opening on the school board potentially. You have time to let them know what it looks like to be a school board member, what does it mean to file, how do you file? And just to give them information about your school district in general. We've created a presentation that superintendents, board presidents can use to inform the community about their school district as a whole, and then also about what it means to be a school board member.
Whitaker also says that MSBA has numerous resources to help potential school board candidates from filing to election.
So on our website, we have a ton of information, some written by lawyers so that they know how to appropriately file and run a campaign, but some written by us, just again, trying to outline what does it look like to be a school board member, what does it feel like to be a school board member, what are your responsibilities? So we've created a module for candidates that school districts can sign up for and then give the login information to those candidates. So they can go in and have a better understanding of, now that you're a candidate and you filed, you know, what does it look like to be a school board member? It's interactive, gives a lot of information about the state and what it means to be a school board member.
Visit the MSBA website for all of the resources and training modules available to school boards and potential candidates. Additionally, you can learn about required notices, dates and times for filing, candidate qualifications, financial disclosure statements, and recommended practices from the first day to swearing in new board members at MSBA's Board Candidate Filing and Election Webinar, held on October 30th at 1:00 AM. This webinar is recommended for the superintendent, board secretary, and other central office staff involved in candidate filing. For more information, visit the MSBA website. And last, but certainly not least, thank you to all who hosted and attended MSBA's Fall Regional Meetings. Meetings were held in all of the state's 17 regions as attendees gathered to network, learn, and share with fellow public school leaders to ensure all students succeed. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in November for the next MSBA Board Report.
Alright, thank, what is it, November 3rd, 4th is the conference?
It's the end of next week.
Eighteenth.
I take that back, it's October, the end of next week.
Seventeenth, eighteenth.
Yeah.
You'll be receiving an email later this week. Beginning next week.
That's why I'm not the delegate.
I have a question, do we have somebody going to that crisis summit communications that's December 5th that they talked about in the video? That was the first I'd heard of it.
Usually Jeff goes to that.
Yes, he goes to a number of different things. I'm not sure if that one in particular he goes to, but he does attend different statewide events.
He just went to one in the last month.
Yeah, either Jeff's City or Columbia, I'm not sure which one.
No visitors? Alright, moving on to discussion items. First up is Lewis Elementary Building Report, Dr. Comstock.
Hi, my name is Jill Comstock. I'm the principal at Lewis Elementary, and I'm excited to be here tonight to tell you a little bit about what's been going on at Lewis. I wanted to start with the one pager of our building improvement plan. You've seen it before, but I thought it was important to have it up there again so you can see what we've been working on. We continue to work hard on our building goals, and I'm happy to be here to have the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about our progress and what we've been working on. So this is a snapshot of our data. We recently took the first round of star reading in second through fifth grade and star early literacy in first grade. And you can see here the percentage of students in each grade level that are meeting or exceeding grade level expectations based on that first round of data. We spent two Thursdays in our grade level collaboration working on using that data to put reading success plans in place for our students that were at risk and needed them. And then we used some of our October 27th professional day to plan for our kids that are meeting or exceeding grade level expectations because we want to push and grow them as well. Another piece of data that we're proud of is our positive office referrals. This is something we started last year where teachers can put in a positive office referral for students when they see them doing something good, behaviorally or academically. And then Mr. Travis and I get the joy of calling home and telling parents about what their student has done. You can see Sal's face right here as he's hearing his dad. He's so proud of him for what he got a positive office referral for. I have 18 up there, but I think when I looked today, we were at 23. We made a couple of calls today. So that number's growing, and we're really proud of our teachers for taking time to recognize our students. Our current attendance percentage for our daily attendance is 93.94%. Our goal is 95%. Our attendance council is dedicated. Tammy Pollard, our attendance secretary, Kristen Birdy, Amy Brinker, Sam Johnson, they are committed to improving attendance, and they come solution-focused with ideas. Some of the things that we have in place is a perfect attendance family basket. We know that regular attendance at the elementary level is a family effort, and so we wanted to really recognize those kids that didn't miss a single minute of school. We gave away five baskets last year that were full of family activities to do. So board games, a gift card to go out to eat, popcorn, blankets, those types of things. We're hoping to give away even more this year. We started a 98% club. Each month at our assemblies, we recognize the kids that were at school 98% or more during that month. And we give away a Tiger trophy to the class kindergarten through second grade and third through fifth that had the highest attendance for the month. And kids are super proud to have that trophy in their classroom for a month. It's either that or the Golden Lunch tray that gets the most excitement, right? Our attendance council also does a really good job of supporting students and families that struggle with attendance, so we put some interventions and plans in place to help support those families as well. And our parent group has some exciting things that they're gonna do to start supporting our attendance too. So look for some information coming about that. But we're really working on improving our attendance. We know we need our kids here at school to improve achievement. One of our top priorities at Lewis is creating a culture of learning. Our goal is to improve student achievement for all students. So this year, we're really focusing on small group instruction, both in math and reading. We're building in time at our professional development days and our Thursday collaboration to really make intentional plans for growing our students. We've talked a lot about having high expectations. We know that our students will raise to the expectations we have set for them, and so we're working on teaching them how to embrace that productive struggle because that's where growth happens. We're also, one of the goals on our building improvement plan is helping our teachers have toolkits of instructional strategies that they can use to meet the needs of their students. Last year, we worked really hard on taking those high-impact instructional strategies that are in wit and wisdom and using them throughout our school day. We saw a lot of success with that, more critical thinking, better collaborative conversations. And this year, we're working on continuing to build those instructional strategies that teachers can use. We're also focusing on an inquiry approach to science. We've talked a lot about how science is a building-level responsibility. They take the science assessment in fifth grade, but it is not the sole responsibility of fifth-grade teachers. So we've really committed to prioritizing science instruction, seeing it as an opportunity to build curiosity and problem-solving for our students. Sam Johnson's leading our building leadership team, and they've been working hard so far this year on teaching teachers how to teach kids, how to ask testable questions. We want our kids asking questions and coming up with plans to solve them instead of our teachers doing all the walking them through it. So they've done a fantastic job teaching teachers how to do that. We have two focus words for our school year, grit and joy. Our students in third through fifth grade take the Panorama Survey every year, and they're asked questions, and they score themselves low in the area of grit. So we know that we need to teach them how to respond when they have struggles. We also know that as exciting as it is to move into a brand-new building, there's a lot of things that come with that and challenges, and our adults need to have grit as well. So we're working on grit with both our students and our staff. And we chose the word joy because school should be a place that students and staff are excited to come to every day. So we're really working to be intentional for finding those opportunities to build joy into our day and then celebrating when we see things that bring us joy. I told you, Reid. Another big focus for us this school year is maintaining a positive climate and culture for all of our students. We started our school year off really talking as a staff about what we want our learning environment to be for our kids and then making a plan for how to preserve that learning environment every day. We started with our PBIS matrix. We had a lot of conversations about how it had a lot of words on, and it was just a decoration on the wall, and so we simplified it. We used two-word phrases that our kids can use and that our staff can use, and we made it a goal that these are words that we hear all day, every day, from kids, from teachers, from everyone in our building. Our PBIS team that Mr. Travis leads has done a great job of using data to identify areas that we need to work and coming up with lessons to teach those skills. We really embrace a teach-practice-praise model, and we've seen a significant reduction in our discipline referrals when we look at how many we have at this time this year to this time last year. So we're really proud of the work our staff has done in this. Character Strong is another thing that we've started this year. We start every day with a 10-minute Character Strong lesson. And then at our assemblies each month, led by Mrs. Maury, our counselor, we get to celebrate students who have demonstrated that character trait of the month. And so you see Reid here with his character trait of the month yard sign. And I wish he could have been in the room when his name was called because he ran down like it was the Price is Right. He was so excited to get to be celebrated. So that was a great moment. Another thing that we have started this year that our building leadership team is working on are buddy classrooms. One of the goals on our building improvement plan is that we have connected students with a strong sense of belonging and support. We really want students to have someone they're connected to, teachers, other students. And so once a month, grade levels get together. A kindergarten class with a third-grade class, first with fourth, second with fifth, and they do an activity together. It's an opportunity for them to build relationships with other students, to mentor younger students, and to have another teacher that they're connected to. Some of the activities that they've done, science activities with a testable question, reading a wit and wisdom writing to each other, PBIS lessons that support what we're working on. So it's been a great opportunity to bring joy and build relationships. We're also always working on teacher and staff wellbeing and support. Our Tiger Connections team, led by Mrs. Maury and Mrs. Flanagan, they work hard to bring opportunities for us to connect. In our current location, at the Early Childhood Center and in the trailers, like, we have to really work to stay connected, and that team has done a great job finding opportunities for us to have fun, connect, and celebrate each other. And I couldn't miss an opportunity, just to tell you how proud I am of this group of people. They've embraced our move to our temporary location. They face whatever challenges and obstacles come our way with grace and a solution-focused attitude. These are pictures of our most recent visit to the new building. They were so excited. There was just happiness and joy as they looked at the progress, picked up their classrooms. To say we can't wait to move in would be an understatement. We are so excited. Our theme for the year is greatness never stops moving. We have worked really hard last year and this year to build a strong foundation of the Lewis way of doing things, and we're excited to take that to our new building and see all the great things that we can do. So now, the best part, I have with me three students, fifth-grade students, who are on our first-ever safety patrol at Lewis. So you guys wanna come up?
Hi, my name is Maddie Woods. I am a fifth-grade student at Lewis Elementary. I am the captain of safety patrol. The other safety patrol officers are Bentley and Elena. At dismissal, every day, we make sure people are safe, that they're safe and respectful when they go to their car or bus. We help open doors of cars so students can get in. My favorite part of safety patrol is giving high fives when kids walk by. Do you have any questions for me?
Do you have any questions for her?
That might be the best thing we've ever heard.
They've done a great job. They really reinforce our PBIS expectations, give high fives, and keep people safe. So we're really, really proud of them.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Did any other questions for Dr. Comstock?
You're gonna love your new building.
I'm excited.
You get happy, you're in it.
I have a question, but it's not necessarily just for you, but it pertains to something that you said, which was that the science instruction should not be the sole responsibility of fifth grade. And I think that's fantastic. And do you think that we, as a district, are embracing that across all elementary schools and not just at Lewis?
You have no idea. Yes, yes, all of the things.
Because we do hear, we hear so much about reading and math, and, and you know, knowing that they do test later, I think that that was, that was a great point.
So one of the things we talk about, I know you've heard me talk about background knowledge a lot and what an important part of literacy that is. And so one of the things that we're working on as a whole district, why? Is that everyone has an involvement in teaching reading. Science and social studies are just absolute huge parts of building all that background knowledge. So we're trying to get really creative with finding time to fit science into our day. Jill does an incredible job of purposely setting her times. Like, she sets a calendar of when to go in and observe teachers during science time. She does an outstanding job. I was actually at grade level collaboration with them, and it was fun because she set up basically a scenario where the teachers were struggling to do higher-order thinking. And you could, it was just interesting because that's how your kids feel. So like, it, she was, she was working on the grid, for sure, during that time. It was really good. But yeah, K-12, science is tested pretty randomly throughout. It's biology eighth grade and fifth grade, but it's not just fifth grade, eighth grade, and, you know, sophomore year. It's a, it's a K-12 exposure that we're trying to do a better job with.
And then speaking of grit, you mentioned the Panorama Survey. I don't know what that is. Can somebody give me an update on that?
I can tell you what that is. So it is a social-emotional survey tool. It's part of our Clay County Children's Fund grant. So basically, all the schools that get that Clay County Children's Fund utilize Panorama to do social-emotional surveys of students. And so it's three times a year. So like, our survey, we know what's going on right now. It actually closes Friday, and it asks students in grades three through five and then six through 12 a variety of questions, and it's all about their own perception of their social-emotional being. And then what happens is, and Panorama takes their, their survey info, but then also it compiles their academics, so like, their current grades, their attendance, and their behavior. And so it triangulates all that data for our building administrators and counselors. And then they use that platform to develop interventions that are good for the students. And so the cool thing about Panorama is it has these playbooks and interventions. And so you can say, I have a student who's struggling with their self-efficacy. And so you can go see different intervention strategies that when they're working with them in intervention groups that they can, they can utilize. But it tracks the student's data from year to year, and also with all of those behaviors and those different attributes put together so that they can make a really good intervention plan, not just, not just on the SEL or not just on the academics, it puts it all together. It's pretty cool.
And I think that the yard sign idea is like so fantastic because as we know, like, with the sports and stuff, everybody loves to display those. And I think that that was a very clever way to get the kids and the family and the community excited about their celebrations.
I have to give props to Amy Brinker, one of our teachers. That was her idea, so we're excited to be there.
Alright, thank you. Moving on, next up is academic review, Dr. Miller.
Page two, ready? So, I wanted to give you an update, and I can't really give you a year four update without talking about the first three years. As you know, this is year four for me, and this is literally the plan that I interviewed with and the plan that I followed for three years. Just some, some highlights, I think that first year getting a complete written curriculum was probably the biggest challenge. In order to get that foundation started, everything else has really just springboarded off of that. Moving into year two, we focused on formative strategies, data teaming. Our grade level collaboration meetings are just completely different than they were before. I know Jill mentioned that every elementary, every grade level meeting, it used to kind of be informational, like a to-do list for teachers and a, an item list. Now, the first 10 minutes is guaranteed professional development for every teacher that's related to things that they're either seeing in the classroom or building their district goals. They do an outstanding job, and the administrators are leading those, which is super impressive. In addition, data teaming really is focused on data that matters that they can directly impact their teaching with in like a quick way. I'll talk about this in a little bit, but when we first got here, we had NWEA testing. I'm sure you guys remember that. And it was a test that took a ton of time, and it just didn't impact instruction at all. And it was a test that took a ton of time, and it just didn't impact instruction at all. We were giving up huge amounts of class time, and I didn't see it making a difference for our kids. So we definitely transitioned into that from assessments. And then in year three, just kind of making sure that that foundation was super solid. If you look over here, we did our first curriculum cycle. I put that calendar in place to go through a cycle. So every year, the focus will be on something. This year's cycle is on our practical arts department. So I'll be filling you in. I met with the instructional coach, Jeff Manning, who's going to be in charge of that. And so, we have a calendar that's going to bring us to completion on that at the end of the year. So I'll share that with you when we're done. But if you look at these first three things, on year three, you'll hear me talk about responsive teaching a lot. And that's really a goal of ours, is, I think, teachers, when I first got here, were waiting to be told what to do with kids. Like, what score should they be at? What score makes me okay as a teacher? And so, transitioning that to, it doesn't matter where the kids are at. It's your responsibility to really be able to identify that and give them what they need to spring them forward. So you hear me talk about responsive teaching a lot. Last year, again, you can tell I'm, we're pretty hyped about science. Spent a lot of time with that science curriculum cycle. They're utilizing a new resource. They're playing around with experience, with experiments, and some hands-on learning materials, pushing their thinking. Science isn't coloring in a worksheet with a plant on it. So transitioning into getting the, the kids really interested, and it's, it's messy. So getting teachers to kind of release some of that control and be okay with the noise and the messiness is, it's been exciting to watch. Learning culture changes. One of the other things that you'll hear me talk about, and Jill mentioned it several times, the culture of learning. Some things, I was a little bit different in my approach to it. So I think before, when we first got here, again, teachers were waiting to just be told what to do. When I met with administrators, they would sit down with a notebook and a pen and write down every single thing I said. I couldn't get them to have conversations with me. So really, switching it to more of a collaborative team effort. Now, I'm super proud to say, and I think you can hear it when a lot of our building principals get up there, my goals and their goals are completely and totally aligned because we developed them as a team. It's very common where I will sit down, I never do anything, without meeting with principals and saying, here's what I'm thinking. And it's taken a while, but they're comfortable in pushing holes in it and saying, I don't know, have you thought about that? It really is a good collaborative team effort. A few things that I was super passionate about that have made a lot of difference. Getting teachers into other classrooms. I learned this as a coach, that the best teaching is just in an isolated shell where one teacher's the only one that can see it because teachers don't go from classroom to classroom. So you've heard me talk about our Tiger Walks. It's been incredibly successful. Our instructional coaches are still doing that. And teachers are participating in it even though they don't have to. A lot of our new teachers, it's some of the best professional development we can offer them. It's during the day. They are freely giving up their planned times just to go and see other teachers teach. So that was huge. Another thing that I, I'm not going to go over each one of these. But I think really the shift to, you'll hear me talk about students over scores. Again, I think people were addicted to give me the number that makes it okay for this kid. And I wouldn't ever give them one. So really, it doesn't matter. The focus for our district is on growth, and you'll hear me talk about that repeatedly. Again, I think that I'm really proud of all of the elementary schools. It's, it can get really competitive between three elementary schools. And I think having them aligned to really focus on the same things because our kids overall really need the same things. So everything really is equitable. Any third-grade student, regardless of the school that they go to, gets the same third-grade experience. So this was my, kind of my visual, and I really, really simplified it. So for the next four years, this is the visual. It's not my best work, but it really makes a lot of sense once I explain it. So it's just as simple as this. My main goal is preserving the learning environment. And I've worked extensively with cabinet and support from that. So anything that we can take off of the plate of a principal to give them time to be in classrooms more often, to support their teachers, we're trying to do that. Dr. Everett and I have worked a lot. She's in charge of discipline. And so, really, just, I'm not saying that the kids aren't going to get in trouble. They're, they're going to get in trouble. But really, streamline, streamlining our approach to try to preserve that learning environment so that a teacher has the ability to teach our kids. We collected, I think I counted, it was like 800 pieces of data in one month of how ready a kid was to learn. And it was like 92% of our kids were ready with their pen in their hand, just ready to learn. So being responsive to those kids and making sure that we're pushing them is really the primary goal. In addition to that, you can see literacy. I tried to make it a sledgehammer. Those are the best I can do because it's really like my main focus. And then when you look at PLCs, we're going to start revisiting that and really look at a way to kind of bring that back into focus. Again, with data teaming, responsive teaching, and instructional strategies, one of the things that we do is not only are principals bringing instructional strategies to their teachers at those grade-level committee meetings, we have a series of district instructional strategies. And I literally teach the principals in the exact same way. And I create, I basically teach them a lesson on instructional strategies. They go to their buildings, teach the exact same thing. So it is a K-12 district instructional strategy. And they're all focused on engagement. So K-12, they work regardless of age. So we did our first one, and what was it, last week, the last, the week before, last PD day? We'll have another one on November 1st. But it has been amazing walking into classrooms and seeing the teachers do it. It's really, again, pushing the kids kind of, it's making the environment more rigorous. Okay, so talking about assessments. As you know, we're doing STAR assessments now. The state really coaxed us into that with our reading success plans. That's how we're identifying kids. The state pulls that data directly from STAR. We don't submit it. So that's been kind of an interesting, I don't know. It's, it's had some bumps in the road, but it's, it's really worked out. What I am seeing is that our STAR assessments are really predictive of what a kid actually knows. It's, it's a nationally normed assessment, which actually is more relevant than a MAP test. A MAP test just tests Missouri kids. The STAR assessment is testing every third grader nationally who's ever taken the STAR assessment. What I can tell you about some things that I've noticed so far is that our kids do better on the STAR assessment than they do on the MAP. Some things that are, I'm certain affect this is that kids get really fatigued when they take a test for two weeks in a row. The STAR assessment is a 20-minute test that they take once a month. And they, it just builds over time to give you information. The one thing that we're learning as the state of Missouri is that the MAP is also more difficult. It's a more difficult test nationally compared to, like, other state assessments. So what you'll see, the STAR will predict, like, how a kid will do on the MAP. And what you'll see is that kids perform better on the STAR. And it is almost dead-on in predicting how a kid's going to do on a MAP assessment. So we're utilizing that to kind of set some goals, too. So reading success plans. We had an incredible year last year, and it was, it was a lot. But again, it was mandated by the state. The teachers did an incredible job. And I think that we're starting to see that all of our hard work paid off. The one thing that I have to say is I will never be able to give you data on reading success plan numbers from one year to the next, and here's why. So last year, any student in the bottom 25, below the 25th percentile needed a reading success plan. They've normed that to coincide with our MAP assessment. And they've upped the percentage to anyone below the 32nd percentile now needs a reading success plan. So because they're going to change those numbers every year, I'll never be able to give you solid data on one year to the next. But I did intentionally find some data that's still apples-to-apples to be able to show some growth for you guys. So if you look at this, this is just last year's reading success plans. So at Cornerstone, we started out with 181 students at the beginning of the year. At the end of the year, 62 students were still remaining on a reading success plan, which means that 66% of those kids who started the year exited a reading success plan. Keep in mind also that that really entails kids who are two grade levels below, where they should be at least two grade levels below. So 66% of those kids are now available. They're ready to sit with their peers and have class instruction. The longer you wait, the more that gap spreads across time. So I am incredibly proud of this. At Elkhorn, again, 49% of all of the kids that started on a reading success plan graduated. They're no longer on it. Whereas 60% of those kids who started the year on a reading success plan are no longer on it. So when you look at reading proficiency rates, this is also the same because this is a STAR number. So this year's reading proficiency rates, meaning our kids proficient at reading at their grade level at this time, 64.6% of our kids are reading on grade level. They're proficient readers. If you'll notice, this does not coincide with our MAP scores, which are somewhere between, historically, I'll just throw the number out of 48 to 49% K-5. So that's higher, again, because of the things that I talked about. But the one thing that I am so proud of is that this number, which is the exact same kids, exact same time, from last year's number to this year's number, following their cohorts, were up 13% in our proficiency rate. So that's an incredible increase. We're doing a difficult reading program. It's had a lot of growing pains. I, I think that we are starting to reap the rewards of this. I cannot wait to see what we can do this year after kind of the growing pains have gotten through. Middle school has adopted it now, and so this is going to be a really successful K-8 program. Some celebrations that I wanted to share with you. Growth, it's very, very common to have what we call the summer slide, which is from May to August. Kids are not really doing a lot of reading and not a lot of studying. So it's very typical that you see that summer slide. This year's assessment, which the kids just, this is only reading that they just took, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh graders all showed huge growth. Now, this is measuring the amount of growth that they're capable of. So you want to see higher number of growth? You can expect every kid to grow a little bit. But this measures a normal amount of growth. This is how many kids have a normal amount of growth or above. So this is just incredible. Again, the focus is on how much a kid, we can grow them. Even though your kids are, are low, if you grow them a year, they will always be low from one year to the next. So you have to get them even further, push them a little bit harder to get them back on track grade-level-wise. And we're doing that for, for our fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh graders. Some concerns is the opposite of this. We're not seeing as much growth in our second and third graders. Again, those are last year's first and second graders. Those are foundational literacy skills that we're really seeing that we're going to have to build back up. So our second and third-grade teachers are really working on getting those skills backed up. So that's one of the things I'm going to be tracking. I think Jill had some evidence that, that showed second grade is, is something to look out for. So other celebrations. I have like my little passion projects that I like to start and bring to the district. Battle of the Books is something that I learned about at a national conference. It is huge in, like, the East Coast and down south. The teachers were talking about it. I'm like, what are you guys talking about? They have state competitions that are enormous. And so, they're four-year advanced readers. And kids read 12 books. And then they have like a Family Feud-style competition. That's adorable. And they literally have a contest to try to determine, like, it's, it's like answering questions about books, and they make a big deal out of it. So I, no one in the area is doing it. Like, I'm hoping to maybe talk another school into it eventually so we can have like an inter-school battle. But right now, all three of our elementary schools are participating, and so they'll battle each other. And I'll be sure to invite you to that. I'm really looking forward to it. So we purchased all of the books. Teachers recommended students based on their reading level. So this is really an enrichment activity for our kids, kind of to push them further. One of the things that high school's doing, and it's something that I'm so proud of, is we're offering internships to some of our kids. Currently, we have 17 internships. This is separate from anything that the Career Center is doing. It, it literally is a job-centered, student-directed internship, where the last two hours of the day, they go to work. They're not being paid, but they're shadowing in areas that they are interested in. Every one of the students is placed. In addition, Tony Harmon is doing an incredible job of leading this. He's the teacher for it. He gives up control of his class to his students better than anyone I've ever met. I'm kind of a control freak. He let them create the handbook, and then they presented it to Sarah and I to determine, like, if, if we missed anything, or do you want us to add anything? They did an outstanding job. They created the rubric for how they want Mr. Harmon to go in and assess them on the job. We've got kids that are working for mechanics. We have one student at the fire station that told me they were making something called IV bombs. I don't think it's really, I guess it's something they're, I have no idea. He was really into it. But they're really enjoying it. And I think that these are kids who, traditional school may not be their thing, and they're just eating it up. I'm so excited to be able to bring this to those, those students. Another thing which has been a giant headache for me and my friend John in charge of technology, look at the boys. Canvas is our 6 through 8 LMS. It's basically the program on how we deliver instruction online. The teachers and students love it, but from the management side, it has really been a lot. One of the, the kids are doing an outstanding job. The teachers are doing an outstanding job with it. But they're actually loading all of their curriculum into it so that next year, it's just going to be ready to go to push out to kids. So when you think about our AI days.
Not AI days.
AMI. I'm going to, I'll talk to you about AI next. I'm going to a conference Friday, so we've got some laws coming your way. So with, with our AMI days, we could just push those out to kids. One thing that I've challenged the high school with, and I've got more to challenge them with, but we're starting out by having them create a personal finance summer course along with health. Those two courses are our most popular summer school classes for kids to take over the summer and get them out of the way so they don't have to do it for the year. The annual cost typically for the district is between $40,000 and $60,000 that we spend every year just on those two courses. So I'm going to be working with Desi to try to see how many more courses and maybe some cryorecovery options. I think really, sky's the limit on how we can offer this to students in a whole bunch of different ways. It's really not about the money for me, but if that's $40,000 and $60,000 we're giving to a company, I would rather give this to our teachers to teach our kids. So those are all exciting things from CNI. I'm happy to take your questions.
Okay, so I have a question. On the RSP growth, we made mention that saw a lot of growth over the summer from four to seven, grades four to seven.
Correct.
Yep. And so, when we were talking about the slide before that, and we were talking about these percentages, do you think that the students, I guess not really when it's the middle school, I was going to, I was wondering if some of those students that aged out or graduated out of the RSP program grew out of it? If that was representative of those similar age groups? But there's middle school in there, and these are elementary, so probably not. So of that growth, what grades did you feel were the greatest, had the greatest impact?
For the reading success plans? So it's hard to say, like, which one, and you're talking just from an implementation standpoint.
Yeah.
So anytime you create a reading success plan, again, it made the teaching responsive and really made, brought focus from, from the data. Teachers could get data, and they could sit down with the kid and say, this kid is really a struggling reader. And oftentimes, what would happen is say, they would be like, ah, we've got to get this kid some special resources. Or we, you know, give this kid title, or push them out. You know, basically, somebody else needs to come in and fix, fix this kid. The one thing that STAR assessments has, has brought to us, and letters, science of reading, all of these things have happened at the right time. Teachers have the power to be able to identify specifically what a kid needs. I mean, down to the various, like, CDC words. Like, it'll tell you they need help with this vowel and this sound at this time. So that it really empowers a teacher to be able to sit down at a small group setting and work with a kid. So this isn't because of a title teacher, or this isn't because of, I mean, our title teachers are incredible, and all of our teachers are incredible. And all of our teachers are incredible. But the majority of these kids exited a plan because their teacher knew how to fix them.
So it's not like we have a trend that second grade is always hard. And so we have a lot of second graders in there because that's the year where reading really kind of lifts?
No, that's a, that's a great question. So typically, we see second grade and first grade as being the most challenging years. If you've heard of the third grade, what do they call it? The, I hate, I hate that. It's like the prison highway or whatever, that if you don't learn to read by third grade. And it's really, I hate that. It makes you feel icky. But basically, what they're saying is that after third grade, it's so hard to get caught back up again. So first grade is when you get your foundational reading skills. And really during first grade, they can identify, okay, this kid's struggling. But it almost takes the whole year to really notice that a kid's struggling because those foundational times you're learning to read. Second grade, I think you really get to identify and work on those kids. And you'll see the growth from second to third grade. I think that it speaks volumes just in how many kids are exiting off and then looking at the growth from some of our upper level kids. And to be honest with you, I don't know that our fourth and fifth grade teachers, middle school for sure, but I don't know that we have done a good job of equipping our fourth and fifth grade teachers to intervene in reading in any way previously. I, I can't remember. I think it, I may have been you that called me and said that the fourth and fifth grade teachers are so much more excited than the K through three teachers ever were about teaching a kid to read. They've never been exposed to it. So it's all these light bulb aha moments where they're like excited to sit down with a kid and start working on these skills individually. So it's really just about new training, new teaching, new philosophy, new science, new research that's made all the difference.
The numbers felt a little high to me as where they started. And it was great that, you know, so many of them came out of it. And I just wondered if any of them fell into those like those hard zones of the younger years. And some of it is a little natural and some of it is the truly the push.
It is, it is. And one of the things that I think is a learning lesson from us, teachers were terrified to miss a kid who should be on a reading success plan. And should I put them on there? And will you tell me, will you give me permission if this kid needs one or is it okay if they don't? And we, as administrators consistently told them, you are in charge. What do you think about your kid? It was scary for them. But I think that you can see this year in year two. I think that their, this STAR assessment's just one assessment. It really is a body of evidence that nobody knows better than the teacher. So if the assessment comes back and they're like, there's no way this kid is doing it. They would almost ask permission, whereas now I think they have, they feel empowered to be like, this isn't right. Like I don't think this kid needs to be on a reading success plan. So when we first started, they put everyone on a reading success plan because they were afraid. Yeah.
And so jumping back to year one and two, it was a, it was a heavy lift for the teachers, right? Because they didn't have that same type of structure around curriculum. And as it's getting a little easier for them because their curriculum is now set for them, which is fantastic, how are the new teachers adapting to coming in and potentially coming from districts that had similar to Excel switch rates prior to the Miller?
Great question. So as you know, one of the most heartbreaking things was we sent all of these teachers to letters training and thirty percent of them took that training with them somewhere else. So we did get some veteran teachers that came to our district with letter certification. But some of them are brand new baby teachers that didn't go to college for teaching even. So I made the decision that if they are a first-year teacher, letters is a heavy lift. It's a lot of work. So if you are a first-year teacher, we didn't send you to letters this year. You just really need to focus on classroom management and being a better teacher. With that being said, our instructional coaches and specifically our administrators are giving them extra support in order to kind of teach them along the way. But we would just lose them if we sent with all of, I think it's thirty hours of work. It's like taking a very intense college course on top of being a teacher for the first time. So we're taking fourth and fifth grade teachers and then anyone that, landing Paige was in fifth grade. So she missed that and now she's in the lower elementary grade, so we sent her. So that's kind of an example of our focus.
And do the mentors have some of the letters training already that they can help?
Absolutely. So any mentors been with? Any mentor's been with our district before. Now, if you're a fourth or fifth grade teacher, you're going along with everyone else and learning it. But yeah, they specifically choose mentors to partner with teachers. Those first-year teachers are really kind of a concern. And they were really intentional about putting mentors with the right teacher.
Two more questions, I'm sorry.
I love it. Keep going.
We, I am a big fan of like database decisions. And I know that the teachers for a little while had a really hard time with all the data collection because you had to put it here and you had to put it here. You had to put it in multiple locations in order for it to become usable for you guys. Have we streamlined that and made that a little easier for the teachers?
So I didn't buy a program when I got this. And you, I think I'm famous for saying I do my own tricks, right or wrong. But we have a Google Drive. It's that simple where we keep, I made the spreadsheet. I introduced it to the administrators. No one's allowed to make their own spreadsheet. I literally, if you gave me a kid's name, I could look up and tell you what their score was, what their interventions were during the year, and any teacher in the district can come up with it. I mean, as quickly, it's the simplest form that you can possibly do.
For you to export information and data out of, how about for the teachers to input?
I don't export anything out. It's literally just to inform our teachers. That's the sole point of it. At the end of the day, or at the end of the year, excuse me, Desi wants to know how many kids started on a reading success plan? How many ended and what intervention are you choosing to do? So things like small group instruction, whole group instruction, tutoring, all of those things. And I, the state's really tracking what's the biggest bang if we had to fund this? Because they're doing a good job of putting their money towards literacy. So that's, that's really the only thing I turn into the state. But for example, I met with sixth grade teachers. They're brand new to the district. They're introduced to wit and wisdom. So fifth grade teachers did an outstanding job of working with these students and focusing on all of these tasks and routines, interventions were in place. So when students were given the STAR assessment, those brand-new teachers, I could sit down with them, pull up individual students and literally show them. Everybody works from the same document. So they could pull it up and see, okay, these are the interventions that worked or that didn't work. So they can just pick up in September and start working with kids. When we first got here, title teachers didn't even start work with teachers until after first quarter. Man, it's a whole quarter you were wasting not working with kids and they could start immediately.
So I, I may not have been clear the last two times.
Oh, okay.
It was just, the teachers have to input their, the data, all of the they're collecting. And I have heard from being on the streets, right? That there's a lot of different places for the teachers to put it in. And it's a, it's a heavy lift for the teachers on the data collection side, for the teacher themselves to physically put it in. Have you not heard that?
I have heard, data collection is a pain. I'll be honest with you. And whenever you have that many kids who need that many different things, it is hurting monkeys and trying to document all of these different things. And that is teaching and that's the part that is really, really difficult.
And there's not a way to like streamline it. It is what it is.
Maybe AI will come up with some kind of a laser where I could shoot it at a kid and it will spit out everything that they need. We did simplify the form. We used the one that Desi had sent to us. And it literally is one sheet. That we have two tabs for a kid, one that they send home to a parent that's oversimplified, and then a second one for instructors. So literally, we can track a kid, we will track a kid from kindergarten and ultimately till they graduate from high school. We will have kids graduate from high school on reading success plans. Like we don't, we don't stop and give up on them in third grade or second grade anymore. So it's tedious, but it has been simplified as much as we can possibly simplify and still be compliant with the state.
For the interest of time, I'm going to bypass my last question. I'll circle.
You can call me anytime.
I was just going to say it's probably a huge celebration with the STAR reading that it's up thirteen percent. That's huge.
Yeah.
And then that has to make teachers feel awesome about what they're doing. And then I would assume there's fewer reading success plans this year.
Yes. So, and I want to be clear, like just because a kid is not on reading success plan, it does not mean they're not getting a reading intervention. Every kid gets a reading intervention for growth during small group time. That's, I think, the difference. I, I don't want you to think, and that was one of the message I was afraid of giving teachers, is that just because a kid is in the bottom twenty-fifth percentile, yes, they need an intervention. But so does the kid who's at an eightieth percentile and so does the kid at a thirtieth percentile. So everybody grows in this district.
I just, I met a lot of schools across the state. Everybody has the same issue. They're trying to gather this data, data and store it somewhere so that all teachers that have contact with that student can access it. And it follows from year to year. I'm almost to the point that data is like a four-letter word when you go in and talk to teachers and parents about it.
It's.
I think it's kind of a shift in thinking, but if we called it achievement or we made an achievement team, because that's the goal. We're growing students instead of data.
Do you want to circle back and ask your last question?
No, I'll, I'll go offline with her. It has to do with STAR and MAP and accreditation. It's, it'll be a lot, so we'll keep going.
Well, as a mom with a kid on a reading success, success plan, I'll tell you what I told you earlier. My son started in first grade at a below kindergarten reading level. And he's in second grade now and he's reading on track. And that is not because of me, because that can last it reads for me at all. That is what his teachers were doing. It's all the stuff that they sent home. It was everything that they did, so. I hear success stories from parents that stop me and say that all the time. So I know it's a heavy lift for our teachers. We, as administrators, are trying to take as much of the burden off of them so that they can focus on teaching. But we're starting to see that this is coming together and it's working.
Nice job. Nice job, teachers and students.
Yes.
That's a lot of hard work.
Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to item three. You guys don't have to stay for the whole thing. I'm sorry.
Although you're allowed to get to the best part.
You're welcome to stay long as you want. I'm sorry.
We're just getting to the big part. I got some mints.
We do have mints.
Probably some leftover broccoli cheese.
Nice job, safety control.
Yes, good job. I see you guys every day on my way home.
It looks great. As much as I'd love to stay. They're my ride. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, safety control.
All right, next up is community survey results review. Dr. Collins.
So I went ahead and I sent all of your, every piece of information from this survey. So I've got the dashboard pulled up here. We can review things. But basically what we did is there were phone calls made and they went out to, people split up demographically throughout the district. So we had forty percent were from Cornerstone, forty percent were from Lewis, and twenty percent were from Elkhorn. So it was statistically representative of our makeup in our district. So that we were able to make sure that we weren't just calling one area. We wanted to spread things out. We also received a very high number of people that don't have kids or grandkids in the district, just strictly taxpayers in the community. And that, I think that's really an underrepresented stakeholder in the community. It's very important for us to try to reach out and capture what their expectations are for the community school district as well. So we did finish this up a couple of weeks ago. I sent this out to you. Obviously, you can see the trend lines over the last couple of years. You can see areas that were higher, areas that were lower. But I don't really want to just rehash all the data that you've already seen. I really want to have a conversation about what were your takeaways from it? What, what kind of feelings did you have about directions you might want to go? And then we can kind of talk about how that leads into the goals we build moving forward. So if you, I want to like open it up to the floor to say, what were the things that kind of jumped off the page at you guys?
There was a couple of things that stood out to me from the survey. One of them was the quality of ESSD provides a strong foundation for property values in our area. And I only picked that because it's at seventy-two percent now and that's down from ninety-four percent last year. And I thought that was a huge decrease. So, and I kind of talked to you about that beforehand, but that might be good to share with others too.
Well, before, there are some variances that happen from year to year. It is an election year. And so actually, the company that provides this service saw a decline against their entire book of business. There's certain things I think that we could factor in or at least say that this is probably a contributing factor. But we also don't want to write things off either and just say, oh, we don't want to look at that data. But things, you know, we do have an elementary school that's in trailers. So is everyone who's surveyed going to be happy with the current facility plan? Probably not, right? I mean, so there's things like that that make sense. So, but what you want to do, the importance of having this longitudinal data is that next year, when we're in that building, we had better see an increase or we know there's a problem there. And that's the whole point of what the data is able to show us. But we also don't want to overreact knowing that there's this big, huge elephant in the room. Go on. The election also has a big impact on people's perception of school districts. It's a pseudo-government entity, a taxing entity. So we do anticipate some impact from that as well. But overall, when you look at the numbers, honestly, I thought they were really good. I mean, you go through most of the sections they talk about, you know, even increases over the last couple of years. You know, seventy percent of people saying that they think that the school district listens to and values their input and opinions. That's pretty darn high in an election year.
I was surprised by the results, actually.
I, I, overall, I was happy with the results. I guess I have high expectations for us as a board. Always been that way. I'm first born. Can you tell? But anyway, where it says the district does a good job listening and responding to community opinions. And I feel like I'm a good listener, but I don't hear a lot of opinions from community members. And that band is like sixty-nine to seventy-two percent, which you would assume is pretty strong. But to me, that's like a C. Like that could be better. I want people.
I'm an A.
Well, I want people to feel like that they can come to us as a board and that we will listen and respond to that. But I don't know how many opportunities we actually provide for that. I think we give a lot of information. There's a lot out there on social media, whether it's good or bad, positive or negative. But I think when you get right down to the nitty-gritty, I do want to be a better listener. And I want to hear other opinions. My, my thing is, okay, where can I go to hear more and grow? So I think we could work together as a board, but we have conferences coming up. I'm probably going to look at sessions that speak to that. How do other school boards listen to their community members and value their opinions? Which we do, I mean, it matters. Those are the people that voted for us to sit right here. So we need to listen.
I think that's important as, as we start to build goals for next year is that once we see what those goals are, you have to come up with activities that lead towards those goals. And what it sounds like is some of the activities, your goal would be a higher percentage response that people believe that the school district listens and takes an input. Then what are we going to do about it, right? We're going to have to take some action. And whether that's setting up listening posts or actually inviting the community to come into it or being at events or announcing you're going to be at events so that people can come see you and talk to you at those events. You know, there's a lot of opportunities out there to engage with certain stakeholders in the district. The difficulty is not just, it's very easy to show up at an elementary night and then just talk to people. But how do you reach all the other people? Because that's really where the crux of it is.
Like sometimes you have conversations with the same people. So how can you get a better cross-selection of that?
Right. So those are some things we want to think about. But also, you know, we're going to have a new CSIP next year, right? So our CSIP's ending, it's working with Comprehensive School Improvement Plan. And all of that's going to be built into there, some of the things. So start writing some of these things down as far as ideas or things you want to work on. So we want to make sure those are included as we move forward because we want to see those, the growth there as much as we can get.
I think back to that first item that I talked about too, and you said it's an election year. I think a lot of times people don't trust their elected officials. And it carries clear down to where we're sitting.
Hundred percent.
We have to be able to, because we're going to talk the talk, we got to walk the walk. So I just want to be the best we can be.
I agree. Any other areas you guys saw or thought of that were interesting to you?
For me, I was surprised by the results of the potential of actually putting it on the ballot. Putting, putting the teacher salaries on the ballot, that surprised me. That kind, I, I didn't, I didn't expect that at all. I thought it would be really hard one way and that's not where it landed. Could be representative of those that actually took the phone call. And I just, seeing this, thank you first for sending all of our data. And I just, seeing this, thank you first for sending all of our data because that helps to like answer a lot of questions at that time. And, and I just, I, for me, I want to say to our community, like, it's so important to answer those phone calls. It's so important to take that survey because I do feel that anecdotally, sometimes it's more negative than what it showed up on this result. And so I was ready, I was so ready. I'm like, oh, we're going to find it all. And then I was like, whoa, oh, that's not telling the story at all. That's not telling the story at all of what sometimes I hear out in the public. And so it makes it really hard to sit up here and like try to be a voice for the community, for the people that have my ear, right? When the results don't, don't tell that story. And so I just encourage like our, our parents and our community to go out on our website and look at it. So you can see what it returned. And so I was just surprised by that.
It's important too, so, just so everybody understands like the makeup and kind of the process for going about this is, we have a phone, a random phone call survey that a market research company out of Kansas City runs. And they keep calling until they get enough people to fill all the boxes. And then they can, depending on how many completions they get, they can tell you within what percentage point plus or minus, how it would go if it came to a vote in an election, for instance. So in this one, we asked three different questions. So we asked, would you be willing to support a 75 cent levy increase on your taxes in order to support staff salary increases? And that came back, 70% of people supported that.
Yeah, I was surprised.
And then if you say, no, I don't support that, then it takes you to a second question that says, well, would you support 50 cents? 70% of people who said no then said yes at 50, 50 cents. If you said no again on 50 cents and went to 25, or no, yeah, 25 cent, the 25 cent also had 70%, then say they were okay with it. So overall, we have over 70% of people would support an increased tax as long as it went towards staff salaries and benefits. I think that's the important thing to communicate to people is that there's a huge support from the community to make sure that we're valuing our teachers, paying them a competitive and fair wage. That's all we're trying to do. We're just trying to, we don't want to lose good teachers to Carney or Smithville or North Kansas City or Liberty. That's all we want to do. Our teachers should be able to have as good a life as a teacher in some neighboring district.
And to clarify, would that be classified staff as well?
It would be all employees. So I'm glad you brought that up because people say, well, how much of this money goes here? Eight, let's say there's 400 employees in our district, right? Almost 300 of those are certified teachers. So no matter what money you split up or how you talk about it, the overwhelming majority of any money spent would always go towards teachers just because that's where all the people are. But Dr. Bolmore, we talked a little bit about, came up with a plan for how he wants to move forward and take a look at making sure that someone else looks at our salary scales to make sure that we are optimizing them in a way that also creates better equity amongst our staff, but also more motivation to either come here or stay here. Can you talk about that just real quick?
Yeah, so like some other Northland and actually Kansas City area and now St. Louis area schools, they're engaging in some outside corporations or companies. One of them focuses specifically on K-12 education. And looking at other area districts and doing a comprehensive compensation study, looking at classified employees, certified employees, everything in all of our salary scales and comparing those to school districts that we can choose that we know we're competing with, but also like size or like demographic areas. And so we can choose those schools and they will look at those and they'll do a comprehensive study based on that and kind of give us some advice. So here's the advice they would give us and here's about what that would cost. And then if you could afford to do that in one year, great. Otherwise, they can help you build a plan on how you get there in the future. Obviously, knowing inflation will hit and those types of things. So really, what we're trying to do through that process is, A, find the company that's right for us, that, that looks at K-12 education, has experience in that. But also just building transparency and trust with our community and with our employees that it's not just people sitting in a room guessing on these numbers and making it up. Like we're engaging and we're looking at other, other schools and other districts and we're engaging with research that can give us answers that we know are right and that they have the trust that we're using the information we find to do what we can for our staff.
I love that. I think there's a challenge that comes with that also. It can prove numbers that are higher than our budget will allow. And then how do we solve for that? Because once we publicly, you know, make that information public and if we don't, if we're unable to get our citizens to like, to want to add a levy, how do we solve for that? Because that, that will not set well with our teachers, I'm certain, right? And so I, I have to do that, we have to do that. Yes, I'm all for it, but ooh, it could be a double-edged sword.
It could be, but, and again, it's transparency and it's honesty in both directions. If our community says they don't want to pay any more taxes to go towards teacher salaries, then we're going to lose some good teachers and the community has to be able to accept that.
Yes.
Like there's going to be a consequence associated with it. No one's, no one's saying we're trying to have the highest paid teacher in Missouri or even the Kansas City Metro. But gosh darn it, they should be competitively and fairly paid so that they can have the same standard of living that other school districts provide. That's all we're trying to find. And so that's why having an outside third-party source come in and assess that and provide reports to you guys, it's not us. I'll be honest with you, it's not me. I'm retiring this year. I won't see a penny of this money, it doesn't mean anything to me, correct? But it does mean it's something to every single employee in this district, which I care very deeply about. And I want to fight for them because they deserve to have the best possible, not just salary, but also benefits that they can have too. It's becoming more and more difficult to afford good benefits. That's another area that we want to make sure that we keep up with so that people are taken care of. Sorry, I get a little excited about this.
It's part of our job too, as board members. It is our job to be able to advocate for the teachers. And you're going to have to go out with the community and be like, this is why we need that. We can't just expect them to be like, here's 75 cents. You know, that doesn't, it doesn't work like that. We're going to have to advocate for them, so.
Well, I think using that third party also builds the trust and transparency with your staff that you're going to do the right thing with that money.
Right.
And even if you can't do it in year one, you have a plan to get there, whether it's in two phases or three phases. We don't know what they will support, when they will support it or how much. But we're using experts to help us make those decisions.
And I think when the staff sees that, that we're trying, sometimes like that goes a long way. We need to be able to like give them something tangible out of it. But at the same time, just feeling like they're heard, feeling like they're seen when they are working so hard on this new curriculum that they're doing and they're busting their humps. Like, I was shocked when I found out what our teacher salary, our starting salaries were. I, I couldn't believe it. I, kudos to them because they're here for their hearts.
And I'll be honest with you, like, we can't sustain losing 30% of our teachers at the moment. I can't sustain the academic goals that we all have and continually just be a teacher trainer.
You have, and that's the point. You have to keep training new teachers every time they come in because they have to have that support. I do have a question about the survey. How will we share results?
Well, first, we wanted to have this meeting first. But what we'll do is we will have a link and put it up and make it available on our website. And then I'll probably send it out an email to all parents and just give them an opportunity. They want to click and go look at it and they can see, again, it's the community survey, right? So they should be able to see everything that's in here and be able to ask questions. So we're going to make that available too.
This is just part one of the whole survey, right? Because there was the online survey.
No, so this is the statistically relevant, accurate one. So what we did is, we not only did the phone calls, but then we also had three online surveys, right? So there's one for parents, one for community members, and one for staff. So the purpose of those, those are not going to be statistically reliable. But if you don't get, if you're not a person that receives that phone call, everyone has an opportunity to be heard. And that's really the point of the other three. And then, yes, we can break those down and take a look at, surprise, surprise, guess what staff said about supporting a levy to pay higher salaries? They were in favor, right? And it was a little bit more than just the general public, right? So there's some of, yeah, some of those things are, are in there, but we have that available too. But this is really the information that we want to put out there because this is something we can say has some statistical accuracy to it.
And I love that you're willing to potentially share the whole survey because it does allow you to open up and see more of the information. So it doesn't, because I'll be honest, you know me, I was like, okay, is this statistically valid? So I did the math on all of that deviation and that's a yes, you know? And I was trying to find where the demographics broke. I couldn't really find it. And I, I just appreciated having all the data to look at it and it just really helped me. I don't know, I would say feel better, but I also, it leaves me with, I don't know, I have.
A crossroad?
Yes, for sure, because I'm struggling with what I'm hearing versus what this is saying. It's going to happen every single time we do a survey, that's how I feel.
You know, though, it's also, it's difficult. You have to remember, you know, we're in a town of 12,000 people. That's just in Excelsior Springs, but our district has many more people than that. And so how many people can you hear from? And how many different types of areas, you know, places do you go where you can get differing opinions? So it's not uncommon for us to kind of hear from the same people that we know and hear. So every once in a while, it's good to have something like this so that we can get that broader picture of all stakeholders, right? And have an understanding of what everyone needs. But I think everyone can agree that a good school district helps property values. Our people believe that's true. A good school district, everyone wants one. Everyone believes our kids deserve to have the best, right? Everyone believes the staff should have a fair pay, right? So those are things I think everyone can agree on, how we get there and what the numbers are. We can figure that stuff out down the road. And I, I also don't think we just say, oh, let's, they said 75%, let's go for several. Let's, let's be tactical about what we choose, what we select, what we need. And let's go out there and get what's going to actually make a difference for our staff. I think that's something people can believe in and support.
I hope there was one other takeaway that was from communication. So communication had a lower score than I had anticipated. Not, not really, actually. I don't think that we're super about being transparent and always, you know, like open with communication. So I wasn't surprised that that was a little lower on the areas. But I think that's an easy one that we can win over by having the data that tells us that. I think that, I do think that the school building, the buildings are doing better with their newsletters and that was represented in, like, that was one of the higher ones, communication forms that scored, that scored higher. And so I think that's an easy win. Like we should look at that, look at ourselves in the mirror and how can we help to make the communication across our community better?
Right. It's important too, like, we want to share the good things. People only get as excited, like, right? You have some negative thing, everybody goes crazy, wants to see that. But the good thing is, it's difficult to keep finding audiences for those. And we need to keep working on that because there's so many good things that go on. And those kids and the staff need to be celebrated for it, so you're right.
I think the cell phone was a shocker.
Yeah, that one is.
96% of everybody.
98, I think.
What'd that make you think?
I looked into who took the survey because I was like, I told myself that probably came from an older demographic. The survey results are.
The survey said. Ages were everywhere from 20 to 80, right? So here's what I'd like to say about that, and this is something we've talked about quite a bit in Cabinet, is we have current policies on cell phones. Now, those have probably been lax and they've probably let that slide as time. If you remember when, when kids first started getting phones in schools, it was absolute ban, absolute nothing, right? Then after every kid had one, you're like, well, the wave just overtook us and we all just kind of gave in to it, right? And now what we're seeing is there's a very large percentage of people that think that that interrupts the classroom. We have current policies in place. So Dr. Bolmore is working with each of the principals in each of their buildings to review what our current policies are and then either begin to actually enforce and enact some of those or take a look at making some changes or some variances to start moving in that direction as related specifically to this feedback.
I tell you, it'll cut down bullying.
During school.
Yeah, I get that, but it'll, I mean, it'll cut down a lot.
So, but that's another area, you know? Hey, that's good feedback to have. I didn't know how that would come back either, but people were very supportive of that. Anything else in there that you guys struck you or wanted to talk about? So we'll, I'll work with Dr. Bolmore and we'll put, find a way to have this link put up on our website. It can be accessible and then I'll also send out the link to all the email addresses that we have in our database to get them out to people and they can share them with whoever. And if anybody else out in the community has a question, they can always come in and ask. We'll be happy to provide them a copy too.
Any questions, sir? Thank you, sir. Last up is F4, Program Evaluation for Transportation.
If it please the board, I'd like to share a little overview of our transportation program evaluation that we do about every two years and then answer any questions you guys may have. So just some little data overview. So our current transportation statistics. Last year, the school district traveled about 467,301 miles and spent approximately $2.3 million for all non-capital costs associated with transportation. We were then reimbursed $1.4-ish million in state revenue of reimbursements for that fiscal year. The state will max out the reimbursement of 75% of allowable costs. Allowable costs are really the variable there. You know, whether, if they're within a mile, that's allowable cost. There's, there's other things that play into that. Also, Dr. Everett did a really good job of identifying different grants and opportunities throughout the state that we're able to apply for and then be reimbursed for, I don't want to say many of our miles, but some of our.
A fair amount.
A fair amount of our special education miles, which as you can see, those, the special education accounts for, really last year is about half of our overall mileage, which is, it's gone up every year. Our ridership is, we regularly transport about 1,470 students a day. Regular routes, so your regular before and after-school routes are about 1,250 of those miles or students. Special education has about 152 of those students. And a lot of times those are going off-site, out of town. So that's where those miles really rack up and it can get expensive. Early childhood at ECC is about 29 students, head start 16. A lot of those are reimbursable through, through the state through different ways. And then Rock and Tiger Club is about 24, that fluctuates throughout the year. But that's kind of how our ridership was built up. Looking at some of the things that historically we've used to evaluate and kind of look at our transportation program overall. The first one really is revolving around discipline and communication, which is something we focused on a lot, I think, the last couple of years. Our administrators do a good job of working with the transportation department as they've implemented positive behavior supports in the buildings. We've tried to transfer some of that language and expectations to the transportation department as well. Sometimes that's more successful than other because our turnover rate is high. And so then you have to get them in and retrain them on those things. They also work with our transportation department to get a bus at the schools at the beginning of the school year to, to review those expectations, to review procedures, and I think that's helped a lot. We've really improved on the communication that happens between the building and the bus barn when it comes to behavior, whether that's preventing or addressing afterwards. And so that's something that we feel that we've done really good at and improved at the last several years is that behavior, not only prevention, but preventing it from moving to the neighborhood. You're always going to have kids that act up. I know when I was in school, it was a pink slip. You're always going to have kids that act up on the bus. That's done a really good job in that elevating, whether it's to the district level or to the next level. There's good communication practices happening between the building and the bus drivers. And we're continuing to find ways to try and reward that. I know we just met with First Student a week ago or two weeks ago and they were talking about a teacher incentive recognition program where First Student wants to recognize our teachers that are doing a great job with our students, setting those expectations, working in the bus lines and having that line of communication. So we're excited about that. Another area that we look at is just the fleet that's safe and in good repair. And that's evaluated through a highway patrol inspection. So I put the last two inspections in there. Two years ago was not great. Last year was up significantly to 84.2%. So some things that play into that, it can be very minor things or it could be major things. For example, last year, some of the things that play into that, there was an exhaust hanger was separated. That counts as a defect, right? So it's a, it's almost like a code hanger. Put it back on there, the defect's off, but it still counts you in the initial hit. There was a rock tire, there was a hole in the rock tire shield.
Bodyguard?
Yeah, there was a tailpipe was actually missing, so that's a big one. So they fixed that before it could go back on the route. But we're glad that Missouri Highway Patrol comes in and evaluates those things. Two years ago, the scores really weren't great. A lot of the issues that our transportation department comes back to is staffing. It's not only the bus drivers, but it's also the maintenance department, right? And so that's something that we're continuing to work on. We met with First Student, I think it was two weeks ago now. That was a big thing, is working with them to come up with a plan of how are we going to have long-term staffing? So we have a staff driver program where we incentivize, that's a lot of coaches, but any staff member that want to drive the bus, we not only pay for their training, but they also get a small site that needs some minutes for them to drive and they get paid to drive. We have some of our coaches that take advantage of that. We have some coaches that have left, but it's something we're still trying to do as a district to try and incentivize having bus drivers. That also plays into routes. If you have students that are on routes, those route times have not been very consistent. We're down two or three drivers. We have some in the hopper that we're going to get trained, but Kim has to train those drivers, take them through their safety inspections. Kim is the best director in the state, in my opinion. But she's also out driving buses right now, which she doesn't need to be doing. First Student is a corporate. Student as a corporation doesn't want her to be doing, but we have to have people driving buses. So we have a program in place that we would like to roll out. It's just an online portal that parents can go to and kind of see the route and track. That would not be a very successful rollout for us right now because we're having to combine so many routes and so many routes are off time. So we want to make sure that we get the routes filled and we have those drivers filled so that way when we do start tracking, it's actual data. So when we roll it out, it can be a successful program for tracking. It's really hard to do when you're combining routes and stuff because those programs aren't going to, you know, upload in the five minutes it takes for to combine routes. So that's something that we've had a lot of conversation with. The First Student is on the staffing, what corporate can do. Last year, we came to you guys and increased the bus driver pay by, I think, 15% was like $3 an hour. We're not going to do that in a contract every single year. We did it last year, we worked with First Student. Dr. Thomas and I met with them and they need to come up with a plan for how we can do this long-term. And so our contract is actually up at the end of next year, so next year we will go through the process of a new RFP. If we take that route to advertise out and see what kind of input we get from different companies, looking at the contract and what we can do. We love Kim, she does an amazing job. First Student has been very supportive of us and been on the leading edge of trying to do some things. Every district that you talk to, regardless of the transportation company, regardless of they're contracting it out or they're doing it in-house, they're having driver shortages. People don't want to drive buses. And so it's something that we're facing along with every other district and it's just trying to be creative in how we continue to fill those bus drivers and encourage people to come do it. So just some overall summary of the program. Some strengths, our transportation department meets students' needs by providing safe, reliable, timely access to school. We have tutoring buses that's an extra expense or after-school activities buses that run on Tuesdays and Thursdays. There's not a lot of other districts, some districts do that, some districts don't. That's something that we pride ourselves on being able to provide our students. Another one is the transportation of both ECC and Head Start. Another one would be transporting every student that we can according to MoDOT specifications, even within a mile, even though we don't get reimbursed for that and we transport every student at the additional cost to us, as well as taking care of the tutoring bus after school and the Rockin' Tiger Club, right? Transferring every student that wants to attend Rockin' Tiger Club, we make sure they get from Rockin' Tiger Club to school and then make sure they get from school back to Rockin' Tiger Club after school. So some, again, the biggest barrier for us is staffing. That creates all of the other problems. That created our Missouri Highway inspection because we were turning over maintenance department so often, it was hard to keep up with even those minor things when you're looking at those. It also causes issues with our bus routes and our timing and combining routes. It also causes honestly, communication issues because of Kim and Jennifer or office manager are out on a bus, they can't return all the time because when they get back, they have to do reports too that they have to turn in. So that's the biggest hurdle that we're facing. Second biggest hurdle would just continue to be funding. As the legislative passed in Bill 727, right now, they say, the last couple of years, they fully funded, which is really only 75% of transportation. As we see, potentially see budget shortfalls at the state, they may fully fund part of 727, but they may roll back what they give us for transportation. So that's really the second biggest hurdle, is are they going to continue to fully fund at 75% of that transportation or are we going to have to continue to do what we do? And how do we fund those things? So those are some of the biggest strengths and weaknesses of the program. If anyone has any questions, welcome them there.
You can get all that sports money.
That's a topic for another.
Can I speak to that real quick, Seth? I got a lot of questions about that.
Oh, I'm sure I do too. And I said they're going to do it just like they did on the other game.
They're doing it just like lottery. But here's what's important to understand. It's written in there that the money has to go towards education, but what the state, the legislators can do is they can say, yeah, all that money goes to education and then we withdraw other money from there to.
Yeah, if it's $100 million, we'll put $100 million back in the journal fund.
Correct. And there's no. But those are our legislators and that's why people need to start being more active about who their local representation is at the state level in Jefferson City. It's really important to be able to have an idea about who your representative, how they vote, what they vote for, and contact them and tell them how you feel about these things because schools really get used for political purposes and we don't really see a lot of benefits either way.
In the veterans.
Right.
I have a question about, like, student expectations on the bus. I could never be a bus driver. I'm just going to say.
No, you would love to be a bus driver. Do I have an application?
No.
She was wondering if as a board member, if she could do that since.
We'll make an exception.
No, I could barely drive a car with my own children in it. But I know they do a lot with PBIS and they have a matrix that talks about the expectations for the bus. Are those posted on the bus?
I believe they are posted on, yeah.
Okay. Just checking because even if I was a new bus driver, that could also be a guide for me to like reteach students or have conversations with.
Yeah, we try and set up opportunities where it's members of our PBIS committees, either the district committee or the building committees can meet with the bus drivers and kind of retrain them and have those conversations with them.
And the best way I tell people to think of it, a bus is just an extension of the classroom. We have the same expectations in that bus as we do as whether in the classroom, the same expectations, same discipline, all the things should be the same. So that's how we want our kids to act.
And we want them to be safe.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I have a lot of big thoughts around transportation, having been in the building. And so I do understand some of the challenges like firsthand, having been at that front desk until 5 o'clock at night while bus routes are changing. I think that Kim is wonderful. My kids have fantastic relationships with their bus drivers and so any of my questions are not representative of them. I think it all goes back to staffing challenges and I think you answered most of my questions. One of the things that I was surprised by on the evaluation was the state inspection had us below the standard. And while it has come up, by way of what you just said, over the last two years, I was surprised that we scored an average, like, we gave them an average score when they are not at state average. And if we're getting ready to go back into contract negotiations in another year, if we're not scoring then based on like the numbers that are out there, like, what, you know, what is that going to give us when we go into that space if everybody's average or above average on all of their different scores, when we know there's straight challenges? Even though it's not, it's not personal, it is what it is, we're still paying for a service.
Right. I think with the score, what it comes back to is on the last one, we were within about 4% of the state average and also trying to understand the, what they were facing with the turnover they had at the maintenance department and how they were quickly able to turn that over from the 84% to getting them all back on the roads, except for, I think there was one with a big tire issue that we replaced. So I think it was looking at trying to understand all of those, all of those challenges they were facing and that they had gone up by 20%ish and they were still within 4% of state average. I think that's why they received that grade and why I felt comfortable giving them that average on there and the hard work that I know they had put in on that. I think when it looks at going out to RFP, when you look at going back to contract, part of that is who wants to do business with us? I think when we did this four years ago, two companies put in and one of them was Apple Bus and that's who we awarded the contract to and then First Student bought them. So some of that too is being a good patron with them or being a good partner with them. Also knowing that the way contracts are built, it's really a 12-month contract that you can renew four times. And so if either party isn't happy with those, you could get out of those within 60 days with, you know, justifying concerns or whatever. I think in the long term, it is looking at who can be a good partner with us and like, we met with them two weeks ago and they actually initiated this meeting before we had a chance to, and then saying, what do you need from us? What type of plan can we build so we can be successful now and in the long term? And those were two of the things that we talked about with them, where we need, we need more options for transferring our sped students out of district, which they've helped us with. They have a driver program, I think it's called First One, maybe, working with Dr. Everett on sending some of those students to different places. But then also, what is their plan for continuing to be aggressive when it comes to salary? Like, in my opinion, we should not be short of drivers. Any of the districts around us should be short because we're better. And that's what I told them. So I need dual, I need them to come up with a plan to present to us for the next year and then as we go out for the next contract, tell me why people are going to be coming from us. Make the other district short, sorry, I love all kids, but I like Tigers better. I want to know why we're not going to be short and they're going to be leaving other districts to come to us.
Why do you think only two bid us the last time? What was like?
I think there's a huge, I think there's a huge cost when it comes to, I wasn't in this position, so I'm not sure. I think there's a huge cost for a company to come in and buy all new buses and train a whole new staff because, you know, our employees here are First Student employees, so they would go wherever First Student is or they may leave. But I think that's one of the biggest ones and so if they're doing this work and they're putting the bid in, is that a bid we're even going to accept because it's so high because of what their cost would be to come to a new district? But I wasn't in that process. I may ask.
I was. Honestly, there's a couple of reasons why. If you take a look over Richmond, they have a smaller operation there and they didn't want to take on the additional business, so that's the type of growth you see. We didn't get a bid, I don't think, from Durham, which I was surprised at. A lot of it was because of our director, believe it or not. She's been in this job for so long and knows everyone and everyone knows her and nobody thinks that they're going to be able to oust her.
Kim?
Yep. She's a detractor for other people to come in and get the business because who are they going to replace her with? Like, they're going to come in and pitch us on having a worse director? So I think that's part of what keeps some of the competition out, but.
Yeah, I think everyone's a Kim fan.
They are. I mean, she, it's really true. She's really truly amazing and she does everything she can. She's worked so hard and she cares so much. But you're right, staffing is the crux of almost all education-related things right now because we're struggling to recruit and retain employees. Can we hire a person to put in this position? Sure. If I only have one person apply, am I getting the same quality that if I had 20 people apply for it? No. Right? I've told this story many times, but I used to go through hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of elementary school applications. In fact, I had to get every single principal, assistant principal, to help me just to get through them, to look at them, scan them, just to see who do we want to interview. Now, anyone who applies probably gets an interview if they're not just completely red flagged because we only get a couple dozen applicants instead of 400. That's the difference in numbers when it comes to, and that's our teaching positions. Bus drivers are very difficult to find, Paris very difficult to hire. There's a few spots that they just don't pay very well, so you're competing with other lower-paying positions around the community and people have options. Like, do I want to, you know, be in a room with a bunch of little kids or do I want to be a checker at a retail store?
And have to deal with a bunch of little kids.
But they pay about the same, right? So that's, we've got, that's part of it goes back to our survey on our salaries, right? Is we're going to have to pay a little bit better than what Walmart pays in order to get more employees here because some people are going to Walmart instead of working in our schools. Some people are working at kitchens and restaurants here in town, but we'd like to have them in our food service program, right? So a lot of it goes back to that and it's not just us, don't think this is an Excelsior issue. Every superintendent I know is battling the exact same thing.